Evening, everybody, and welcome to the Monday, May 7th, meeting of the Tuckahoe Village Board of Trustees. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the village clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Giordano.
Present.
Trustee Luise.
Present.
Trustee Andino.
Present.
Trustee Lang.
Present.
Mayor Eklund.
I am here tonight, thank you. Tonight, I have one appointment to make, and that is going to be appointing Ginger Crosby to the library board with a term to expire March 31, 2023. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you very much, Ginger, for stepping up again.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luise.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And tonight, we have actually two presentations. We have one that's not on our agenda, but it's a very special presentation. And I'm going to ask Vito Pinto if he'd like to please take the microphone. And he's going to talk about a very, very important event that's coming up.
I don't know if any of you have any need for more posters, but if you have one, that would be great if you have a place of business or no place to hang them around. Well, for your Tuckahoe, Tuckahoe's going around the Tuckahoe, that's where we've been rather busy. My name is Vito Pinto, 120 Belavista Street, Tuckahoe, New York. And I'm presently the chairman of the Eastchester Tuckahoe Veterans Ceremony and Parade Committee. We haven't changed the parade yet. I'm here tonight to just speak out, and hopefully it will get out on the air. On May 27th, at 7:00 PM, we'll be holding a commemorative tribute to the centennial of World War I. And at that program, we're hoping that the residents will take advantage and join us. And the history is that three years ago, when we had our parade in jeopardy of being rained out, most parades were canceled. And that Sunday night, I had called Dr. Moran at Eastchester High School and asked him what the chances were of getting the Eastchester High School auditorium, which he said, "Great." So Sunday night, we put together a program rather fast, and we had a great turnout because many people were going to come anyway for the parade. And we had over 600 people, 550. And we had a very nice ceremony. Leaving the ceremony and going down to the Eastchester Monument Park, where we held just a candlelight vigil for a moment, many residents and the officials and our participating organizations said, "That was great. You know, we didn't have to worry about traffic. We didn't have to worry about cars' noise, horns blowing. We didn't have to worry about the heat. We didn't have to worry about police running up and down. And every time we stopped to have a speech, it was interfered with by just that noise that we talked about." So the next year, which was last year, we proceeded to have another indoor ceremony. And we scheduled it for the Eastchester High School auditorium, but unfortunately, the roof had some repairs and was falling in. So we were fortunate enough to get the gymnasium. And we're thankful to Eastchester High School for always providing us their facility. And we had a decent turnout, 375, by count. We had 350 chairs for another program several days before, and the Westchester Chair Company said, "Leave them, we're donating them." So that was a great, great gesture on their part. It's been nothing but a community event, and we've had the support of the Village of Tuckahoe all the years, whether we had the parade or we had the ceremonies indoor. We're hoping that, again, this year, you would do the same and that you could send a check to us. We have a rather extensive ceremony planned. As I had the book, I can show you, gentlemen, we have a 28, which may go to 32-page, mixed black and white in color commemorative program being printed up. The spearhead behind that is all the plaques that Mike Fix, who is our historian and the designer and developer of the Hometown Heroes plaques, some 64 of them, for veterans from our community who were killed in battle. And they're going to be in there because we had 11 veterans from World War I, four of whom had posts named after them. John Grogan post, which was a VFW post in Eastchester, was deactivated. We had the Leonard Morange post in Bronxville, named after the pilot Leonard Morange, who was killed in training flights, but nonetheless, he was over there leading the charge in training. And that post has just been deactivated, which is an American Legion post. Then we have two other posts. Lieutenant Colonel Sam DiRienzo post was not named after a person, still active. And we had the A.C. Jeffries post. And the A.C. Jeffries post is still in existence on Midland Place. And the most important one is, I guess, the Leroy Gregory post up in Scarsdale PO, but the north end of Eastchester. American Legion Post 979 is still active. So four posts were named after World War I veterans who were killed in World War I. And that's something to behold. So tradition is important to we veterans, and we believe to we community residents and officials. So we're holding the ceremony again on May 27th, 7:00 PM, at the Eastchester High School auditorium. We will have, hopefully, we've soliciting some young people to dress up in World War I costumes and nurses' costumes that we have on hold. We're hoping that the scouts or some of the schools can come through with enough people. If we get 11, we'll have them stand on the stage after entrance. I won't tell you to what song or how, because if we don't get it, we have to improvise. But we have 11 veterans that will be paid a tribute in the beginning of the ceremony. Mike Fix and I have been going around. Nick Tenzano, Jr., has given us a thumb drive and researched a lot of photos from World War I. And we're hoping to get Mike Goldstein at Eastchester High School to help us with the PowerPoint program. So having said all that, we have three veterans that we pick out. And this year, our World War II tribute will be to Eddie Heinzinger. Eddie was a multi-sport athlete at Eastchester High School. I believe he graduated somewhere around 1942, entered the Navy immediately, and was on the USS Juneau. And if you haven't remembered the Five Sullivan Brothers, that's the ship that Eddie was on. USS Juneau was torpedoed, went off limping, and while it was, you know, limping, it was torpedoed again and sank, losing all lives onboard. Among them, the Five Sullivan Brothers and our own hometown hero, Eddie Heinzinger. We're hoping a student from Eastchester will represent him. From World War II onto Korea, we have in Korea Leonard Delvecchio. Leonard was a World War II veteran, who, when he came home after World War II, worked for the Postal Service and at the outbreak of Korea enlisted. And he was a sergeant, or going to be a sergeant, in the Air Force. And he was sent, it was said, to Germany or Italy, and he was going to proceed to the conference that was going to be the ceasefire talks. And when he went to get on the plane, there were no more seats. So he said he wanted to go badly, and one gentleman gave his seat to him, and the plane crashed. So, you know, he was stability, and he had hoped to make the Air Force, which it became in Korea. It had been the U.S. Army Corps up until Korea, and then it became the U.S. Air Force. So with that having been said, our Vietnam veteran is rather unique. He's one of our own local hometown heroes, Ernest Hill. Ernest Hill was a corporal in the U.S. Marine Corps who was killed during a battle in Vietnam, and he was an artilleryman. And his family, for 50 years, has fought to receive the Purple Heart. And thanks to Sarah Wallace from Channel 4 News, you may have seen it on one of her specials, they finally were awarded the Purple Heart posthumously to the family. My only regret was they told the family that they were out of stock. And that just added pain to the agony that they were already going through. So at this ceremony, we're going to recognize Corporal Ernest Hill with a special tribute, and we'll save the tribute for those who come. And for those who don't come, we'll hear about it, I'm sure. And we follow through with the operation post 9/11, Operation Iraqi Freedom and Enduring Freedom, which is Afghanistan presently today. We have the Rising up at Kinsco Dam. And subsequent to the Rising being put up, we decided to recognize on the county board those veterans who were killed in Operation Iraqi Freedom or Enduring Freedom. And presently, we have 17. So we were going to print their photos and history and their names in the book as well. And speaking about them will be our own new Tuckahoe resident, Josh Gachon, who is himself a veteran of Iraq and who's the present director of the Westchester Veteran Student Association. He's the director of Westchester Veteran Affairs for the college. And he's a wonderful young man, and he had his own issues. And he's going to speak, as he did last year, about that group. We have some pictures, and we're going to look at them all again tomorrow night. And as I told Tom Ringwald today, when he said that he was one of the ones who was twisting the pole to get the flowers planted on the World War I monument, I facetiously had written to Greg when I said, "Who's going to cut the grass without cutting the flowers?" But he told me that it's going to be okay, because once they start wilting is when they'll come along with the mower, and they'll just chop them up, and they'll be, you know, pretty much feed for the lawn. But the other issue is, we hope that people attend. I have a couple of sponsorship forms. We've gotten a fairly good response to most of the community residents and some organizations, not as much as we had in the past. So we're hoping that you'll contribute. I know Tony Colavita's already said he would. And I'm hoping that you've been invited to this special taping of a one-on-one up there, or a couple of us again, to be aired next week and the week following.
Yeah, when is that going to occur? Because we did it last year, I know. That taping up at Town Hall?
Yeah.
Is it going to be next week? Because I didn't hear about that yet. Last year, I know we did it.
Let me invite you. It's going to be either Thursday or Friday with Tony and...
Of this week or next week?
This week.
Okay, good.
With...
Yeah, I was kind of waiting to hear about that.
...Foster. I told him, the one comment we got last year was, "We had too many people." It was a gaggle, and they didn't have enough microphones for all of us. And when it was viewed and aired, people couldn't hear us. So I told him, "Let's keep it with just four of us if we can, and we'll go from there."
Good.
We do expect those who are present for the weekend to attend the ceremony. And once again, tomorrow night, we will look at your involvement as the mayor, the supervisor, and our other officials from the county that we will invite. And we have something nice planned, I think. And for the rest of the veterans that we'll recognize, we'll use the commanders and perhaps some veterans from each of the posts. So having said that, the only thing we're waiting on is to finalize the program. I'd be happy to show you some of the things, and just so you see it. I don't mean to have my back, but you want this one, I need this one. This is the front cover. And we have a number of pictures and stuff that we'll go through. I'll come back and show you all later.
Okay.
But the picture that Greg sent and that Tom Ringwald had said he took, is a more distant picture. It showed the monument itself, and our committee thought this was one of the better pictures. It's sort of a picture.
Good.
So if we don't use your picture, please don't be offended, okay? Tom, I mean, Frank, don't be offended if you... But we do have a... Yeah, I'm sorry, I have to get back to the mic. So don't be offended if we don't use that picture.
Okay.
And we'll see where we go from here. The other thing is that I did write and ask for a request. On Monday, we will be attending the Bronxville Parade, which kicks off at Leonard Morange Plaza promptly at 9:00, Assembly's 8:30. So we do plug that as well. And it's a short march, and last year, we had a lot of Tuckahoeans and Eastchesterites at the parade, because I heard them yell their names out and everything. And following that ceremony, there's a brief ceremony at the grave. We're going to have the trolley, which we're thankful that you're giving us again this year. And we're going to come down to World War I monument, we hope, and hold our ceremony that we usually do up at the Holy Mount Cemetery, but highlighting the 11. Mike Fix has had some crosses made with the names of the 11, and hopefully, we could work with Frank on how we can put them there in a nice row. And we're asking that, because of all the flowers, we don't want to trample them on the lawn, but perhaps we can close off Cronin's Hill, Main Street, and have everybody assemble, however many come from Bronxville and whoever wants to join us that day. So we look forward to a positive reply, and we'll work it out with both Frank and Chief Castanza, whom I also, you know, copied on the email. Having said that, we'll be here on Saturday for the Tuckahoe Police Memorial, and we'll also be up at Eastchester following that ceremony. On the 19th, there's a special ceremony taking place up at Gate of Heaven for our Medal of Honor recipients. And many of you, and I'll mention it now, we have four Medal of Honor recipients in our community, two from World War I. And we're going to highlight them in the journal as well. Eddie Rickembacker, who we all know of, who ended up after the war becoming the president of Eastern Airlines. And Sergeant Richard O'Neill, who was many times wounded and got through with his mission. He was a Bronxville resident and also a member of the Lieutenant Colonel Sam DiRienzo, VFW post 2285. So the other one is Richard Chaley, who was a World War II Medal of Honor recipient. He had been at Eastchester High School. And then the last, of course, is Staff Sergeant Robert Charles Murray. And Robert Charles Murray was a graduate of Fordham Prep, Fordham University, and had been enrolled in the Harvard Business School when he thought it his duty to, you know, enlist in the Army. And his story is rather unique. And we had a colored touch-up of his photo done, which the brother and the sisters will be given a copy of, and we'll put that in the journal in color. But we thank you for the monument down in Tuckahoe. And we will stop by various monuments at some time, just to say our farewells and to make sure that we use the three Rs. And every time I speak in school and I mention the three Rs, they think it's reading, writing, and arithmetic, and I say, "Aha, I got you." It's remember, respect, and reflect. Remember those who sacrificed their lives. Respect their decision to do so. And reflect on where would we be without those military men who sacrificed their lives and those who served our country in the defense of freedom and democracy, not only around the world and in America. So those are the three Rs we want to remember on Memorial Day. We thank you for the time you've given me. I probably have spoken too long, but I think it's necessary to get the solid message out. And we look forward to seeing as many of you there as can attend and as many as can attend from our community. We love our community, as you do, and we realize that whenever I speak to kids, war is horrific. But in many cases, it has been necessary. And we've learned from one to the other. And we like to think that the World War I was not the end, but the beginning of teaching us what to do and the advances we've made to be successful in, you know, providing democracy and freedom for our country and those around the world. So thank you very much. And if anybody wants a sponsorship, whatever amount you want, you'll have your name printed in the program. I'll leave a couple for you.
Thank you, Vito.
To the podium.
Yeah.
I will have to take this with me, because I have a meeting tomorrow that I need to show it to. But if you want, I can always drop a copy off. But we're pretty close to doing the final program anyway. Each community will be given commemorative programs for their libraries, for their village historical societies, for their village office. So we will definitely set those aside. So thank you very much, and I salute you. We appreciate your cooperation and understanding. Have Frank DeMarco take that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Vito.
That's going to bring us to our next presentation, which we're going to hear from Frank DeMarco on our annual MS4 report. The riveting MS4 report is...
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. I'm here this evening, like I'm here every year, to speak about our annual municipal stormwater report, which is mandated by the New York State Environmental Protection Agency. And that's this report here. And basically, what they're doing is they're, they want to know what our best management practice is in preventing stormwater pollution, which leads into our waterway. In layman's terms, they want to know what's going into this water, into the catch basins before it reaches our waterways, and what we're doing to protect it, us being the Village of Tuckahoe. So to start from the beginning, every block has got catch basins. And what catch basin does, it's located in the street, up along the curb line, and that catches all the runoff in the streets, and it's collected in this catch basin. And what it does, it takes it to a series of piping and leads it to our closest waterway, which is our Bronx River. And that's our waterway. For other municipalities, it might be a different waterway. But in doing so, it travels through the series of pipes underground and leads to the Bronx The misconception that a lot of people have is that sanitary sewer, toilets, showers, sink water, does that also lead into our waterway? Absolutely not. There are two separate lines that should never meet. They travel parallel to one another in our entire street system. Our sanitary sewer line travels, it's actually gravity-fed, to our Yonkers Sewer Treatments Plant. And again, our catch basin water should be set aside from our sanitary sewers, and that's led out to our Bronx River. So what are we doing as far as best management practices here in Tuckahoe? You know, we're trying to prevent any illicit discharge. And what illicit discharge is, is that anybody just randomly throwing anything that's a contaminant, whether it be fertilizer, whether it be a chemical, oil from your vehicle, doggy litter, doggy bags, bottles and cans, anything that could be thrown into catch basin, is directly led to our Bronx River. So we want to make sure that this doesn't happen. And some of our best management practices, most recently, is the installation of our salt storage shed at DPW facility. Over the years, we've covered it with a canopy, I'm sorry, with tarp, but water, when it rains, still infiltrates through the sides and having a runoff into our sewer system, I'm sorry, in a sanitary, storm system. So at these catch basins, what we've done, also as best management practices, Wade? You'll see the medallion that Wade's going to put on our TV right now, but every catch basin in Tuckahoe should be identified by this medallion. Wade?
There you go.
Okay, there you go. And it clearly says, "No dumping, because it drains into our river." And our river is the Bronx River. And these are sealed on each catch basin head. If you notice, there's a number that's located right below the fish there. And what that number does is identify the catch basin to us at DPW. And the importance of that is that what we've done over the years is we created a GIS mapping of our entire stormwater system. And everybody's welcome to look at it. It's on our website on the DPW Stormwater Management. And what we've done is we even color-coded that. We have seven main lines that lead to our Bronx River. They're called outfalls. And these seven lines are tied into all of 400 catch basins that are in the Village of Tuckahoe. So if we get a spill at this particular catch basin that's labeled with this number, I could look at my computer and find out exactly which one of the seven outfalls it's going to go out to. And what that does, it helps us prevent any spillage, like an oil truck, oil tank, gasoline spillage. They could call me, and I could identify which outfall in the Bronx River I need to block before it goes out to our waterway. So these are some of the things, the best management practices that we've implemented over the years. Also, we've incorporated, Wade, you can take that off. We've also incorporated porous pavement in a lot of our projects. And what that is, is that it looks exactly like blacktop. When it rains, that rainwater will penetrate through the blacktop into a series of piping and filtration system before it reaches our waterways. We've incorporated bio swales, and it basically does the same thing. Instead of running into the catch basin, we redirect the water to feed a series of plants, shrubs. So it would feed the plants and shrubs and naturally filtrate through our earth. And then that'll take it to a series of piping that's underneath that to our waterway. We've also incorporated stormwater separators with some of our major projects at DPW, the Fisher Avenue parking lot. And what a stormwater separator is, it separates naturally all the contaminants within this baffle system in this big concrete vault. And it separates all the contaminants, it separates the oils, and again, filtering the water before it goes out into our waterway. And also controlling the salt that we spread every winter. You know, we're using a lot of natural products. We've used salt beet this year. We're working on products from a brewery that we could possibly use next year by products. So we're doing a little chemistry work, and hopefully, we could get down to a level that'll be environmentally friendly, friendlier. So this MS4 could be viewed at the library, could be viewed at the village clerk's office, the DPW facility, and it'll also be posted on our web. I've posted the last four or five years of the MS4 report. We also have a questionnaire on our website, and I ask everybody to please use the questionnaire, and it'll give me some feedback on what we're doing and what needs to be done here in the village. And again, any questions, you know, feel free to call me in my office. I'm the Stormwater Management for the Village. And again, my name's Frank DeMarco, for those that don't know me. And that's 914-231-0214. Does anybody have any questions, even in the audience? Any questions, anybody?
I think you covered it.
Frank, I have one question. When you mentioned this before about the catch basins, are there filtration systems or a filter that catches these plastic bottles or bottles or balls that go into that catch basement?
I attended the Soil and Water Conservation Meeting the other day, and everybody was concerned about everything that's flowing down our rivers. And how do we stop that? How do we stop that in the river? Well, we don't stop it at the river. We stop it at our municipality. Every municipality needs to contain their own floatables, whether it be bottles and cans, styrofoam. And the simple best management practice for that is, there's a product that's sold out in the market, and it's a screen. What it does is, all the heads of the catch basins are big enough to presently, you know, have all these floatables drop into them. What the screening does is prevent that. So hopefully, the Soil and Water Conservation Committee will start looking at that and mandate all the municipalities to install that, preventing all the floatables landing into our Bronx River. Something as simple as that would be most effective. I know we had the Earth Day cleanup, and that's all we...
Right, right.
And I told the committee that, you know, 90% of what we collected was bottles and cans, plastics.
I know. It's something.
Hi, Mike Gardano. I was involved in the cleanup, and you guys did a great job. You have my shirt on. But what I've noticed, and I've noticed this walking back, I noticed this tonight, I took a walk last week, took some video, there's a lot of crap on the streets. Now, not on the street necessarily, where the street sweeper goes, but on the sidewalk and on people's property, on other property, like outside the brown field, there's a lot of crap, cigarette things that the workers are throwing. So I have a couple of thoughts on that. One would be, I think it would make sense, and it's sort of a personal responsibility more so than, you know, than the village necessarily, but to perhaps get Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, maybe some school kids, and maybe a quarterly basis, go and do a street cleaning like that to make people aware. They have some personal responsibility not to throw their crap all over the place. Also, you can't make your yard a garbage dump, and if there's a lot of garbage on someone's property, maybe there's a fine or something. But it's disheartening to have all these stuff you're doing, putting these catch basins in, and then see crap all over the street. And that's a personal thing. That's people doing that. And we've got to make them aware that all that stuff goes into the river. Danny and I, and I was with his kids, and we're picking up stuff that was a lot bigger than plastic. But there was also a lot of plastic wraps from peanuts and candy and stuff like that. So it's a big concern. If we can stop it before it gets there, so some of the other stuff is responsibilities from us as citizens, so maybe we can work together with the Department of Public Works and create these awareness days where we're not just cleaning up the river, but we're cleaning up the street before it gets to the river. And maybe the news media will see it, maybe we'll get people aware. And if we can cut out half of it, that would be great, because it's just cigarettes and all sorts of stuff that's all over the place. And you can't, you guys can't go there and every single thing, you've got the street there. So my thought is, if we can do it with some kids, make it an event, people might be more aware, and they won't dump their trash, or they won't have trash on their lawn, or think of throwing it out the car. Might be something we can think about.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. You know, I remember the days when the first thing, when stores opened up in the morning, the first thing they had in their hand was a broom.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, that doesn't happen nowadays, you know. And again, when I was a kid, I worked at a barbershop. The first thing he had me do was hand me a broom and go out there and sweep. But I'd like to see more people doing that. You know, it'll only better our community and keep it cleaner for everyone else, especially for our waterways.
Well, thank you, Frank. We appreciate it. You've done a great job, and you've done an awful lot, a lot of volunteer time. I know that as well. So thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
All right, let's see. We do not have any public hearings tonight, and that's gonna bring us to the adoption of minutes, the approval of the minutes of the regular board/budget hearing meeting of April 9, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
Stand.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. The next is approval of the minutes of the budget adoption meeting on April 23, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
In favor. And that's gonna bring us to the first opportunity to address the board on anything that's on our agenda tonight. Yes, sir?
This is Albert Stern, 14 Westview. Hello, mayor. Hello, trustees. I want to make some comments about the budget you were about ready to pass.
Passed it last month.
We've already passed it. Well, then I'll still comment on it if I could. There was a public hearing on the budget last month, and I made some comments. But now I see that the budget that you passed is very different from the budget at the public comment meeting. At the public meeting, you said taxes would go up 2.68%. Now, things have changed, so that I see how the current budget is now increased by 4.14%, a 55% increase over your original proposed increase and what was talked about in the public meeting. I also recall that property taxes now have gone up over 24% in Tuckahoe since you became mayor in 2011, twice the rate of Bronxville and twice the rate of Eastchester. And this year will continue that trend. I just wonder, for one thing, why we have a public meeting when the tax and budget situation changes so dramatically after you have your final budget meeting. And I also have some public, I have some specific questions about the budget. One of the things that was shown in the budget is that property valuations decreased by 2%. I wondered if anyone has an answer why they would decrease by 2%, especially when you've been adding to the tax base like with Quarry Place. Does anyone have an answer for that?
Actually, I know you came to one, our Saturday budget session, and we had explained to you that when we talked about the valuation process, it's a function of the assessor's office. And it's really a question for the assessor, but from a layman's standpoint, it is the assessed valuation of all the properties, it ebbs and flows, it increases and decreases. How does it decrease? It decreases when there are tax or share reclaimers filed, and for businesses, when business revenues are not what they would have been. On the increase side, of course, it increases when market value of your real estate has gone up, and when you actually add new parcels onto the tax roll. And Quarry Place is a good example of that.
So when Quarry Place was added, and Crestwood was added, we still had a 2% decline in the valuations?
Of the overall valuation of the entire
Right.
value of the real estate in the whole village of Tuckahoe.
Correct. Well, I mean Quarry Place was a $50 million-plus development, so I would think that it would help the valuation.
Oh, it did. It certainly did.
By the way, do you know what the taxes are, the property taxes for Quarry Place? How much they're paying in?
No, I do not.
Does anyone know?
No.
Okay. Can you find that out?
You can ask, you can make a request to the clerk's office for that. Sure.
Okay, fine. I also wanted to know why the taxes went up when you no longer have $240,000 that you spent on legal fees and engineering fees to defend the hotel lawsuit. Incidentally, these legal fees were about $50,000 for the plaintiff, and the village spent over $200,000 for an expensive law firm. But anyway, taxes are going up over 4%.
Well, the tax levy was increased exactly 2%.
2%.
Yeah, now 4%.
4%?
What?
For $1,000.
No, 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 no. 2% levy. 2%.
Yeah, the rate is higher than the tax levy.
But let's get all of your questions, so we can, we'll do the fun with math with Bert. But we need to go through, let's go through your questions first. What was the first?
I'm reading here, tax rate per thousand, $562.8139, an increase of 4.14%.
No.
Is that wrong?
It's probably, I don't have, first of all, I don't have the budget, so I'm
Tax rate, you're right.
Yeah. I'm not gonna speak.
Your $1,000 valuation, evaluation went up 4.14%, correct?
I didn't bring copy of the budget with me, because we finished the budget last month.
Well, I have it right here.
Okay.
Here it is, 4.14%. So assuming that nothing happened to your house, your taxes went up 4.14% for the village.
The increase in the tax levy was 2%.
2%.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right. Mm-hmm.
That's right. The levy's 2%.
Additionally, I saw that the bond debt is going up. I think you have a proposal to raise about 1.2 million for bond debt, correct?
Absolutely, yes.
So now it will approach 7 million. I think you'll pay some of that off this year, but it's gone up since 2011 from 2.5 million. In the public comment period, you said you held the line on payroll increases, and you said it was a very tight budget. But I have some questions about that. Specifically, a number of salaries have gone up quite a bit more than was first shown in the public hearing. For example, the DPW superintendent's salary increased 6.1% after he was originally given on the preliminary budget of 2%. Mr. Burke, the administrator, received a 5.5% increase, or $7,500, to give him $149,000 per year, including a $5,000 annual driving reimbursement. Originally, there was no increase in Mr. Burke's salary. The head librarian, I believe, had a 2% increase on the original budget, and it ended up at a 6.9% increase. So my question is, what transpired, I know I left the meeting a bit early, but I didn't hear it, why did all these salaries go up so much from the original budget?
Salary increases are determined by the entire Board of Trustees in an executive session meeting, which we had. And it's based on a whole host of factors. It's on job performance, it's on competitive, trying to stay somewhat competitive with neighboring municipalities, of which we know that we are still actually on the lower end of being competitive in those job positions to our neighboring municipalities. So there's a whole host of things that go into making a decision on salaries.
That's fine. When you had the public hearing, though, these salaries weren't anything like this. They were much, they were considerably less. So my question is, why have a public hearing when you don't even know what your proposed budget is really gonna be? I mean, a lot of these were either flat or 2% increases, and they turned out to be 5.5% or 6%.
Bert, but that budget was approved by the entire board, and the public was available to comment on that budget?
I wasn't, it wasn't available when it was a public, because these were
No, no, no.
minimal increases at that point. And after the public hearing was closed, you raised the salaries quite a bit.
Listen, Bert.
That's my point.
Yeah, and here's my point. My point is this, that if you think that the people whose services are not worth the value that we're paying for them, no, no, that's what I'm saying.
I did not say that.
But that's what I'm saying, is that we're ma-
But you're not listening.
No, no, you're not listening to me.
You're not hearing me at all.
I am.
I said, during the public discussion, it's not fair to say these increases were 1% or 2% or 0%. And suddenly, after the public discussion is closed, they go up 4% or 5% from there, Bert.
No, no. The budget was published, and the public had a chance to comment on those increases.
It was closed.
No, no. When we voted on the budget, it had been published. You could have, the public could have made a statement that that was improper. And frankly, this board has been put in place to make decisions as to what's reasonable. And frankly, I look at all those, the people who you mention, and if the public feels that they're not being justly compensated by this board, then it's up to them to make a decision that this board is enacting properly.
Well, I think-
But I think that they are.
Right. I think they should know what the increases were.
Fine. It's public.
And they're substantial.
It's public, and it's certainly said. It is a public document.
Right.
Yeah.
I have just one other question. Just a question. Why do we have three treasurers?
I don't know where you live, but we only have one treasurer in the village of Tuckahoe.
Well, you have a deputy treasurer, and you have an assistant treasurer. They have three treasurers.
We have a treasurer.
And you have two assistants.
We have a deputy treasurer, and we have, we have a consultant that works in the Treasury Department. So let me ask you this question. Can you give me the structure of the Treasury Department in the village of Bronxville and the town of Eastchester?
Can I what?
Can you give me the staffing structure in just competitive municipality, in other municipalities?
No, I cannot.
Well, the reason why I say it is because you're implying subtly that we are overstaffed in our Treasury Department, that has a budget of-
You haven't answered my question. I asked you why you had three treasurers. You never answered the question.
We have one treasurer, because we don't have three treasurers, because we have one treasurer.
Why do you have three people working at Treasury Department?
We have one person work, we have...
That's-
Okay, all right. You're not gonna be satisfied with the answer. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Hi, Mike Giordano, 62 Chester Street. My question isn't about a budget cut, I mean a budget increase. It's about what seems to be no budget at all. I looked through the budget and saw that there was nothing for an environmental consultant for this year. I think it was zero. And my question on that is, is that are we all equipped to deal with whatever the DEC comes up with on the P sites without some sort of expertise to sort of review that stuff? I know we know a lot more than we did three years ago or two years ago. But I'm just concerned that the southern side and the northern sides are gonna have stuff in it, whatever that stuff is. And we did have, if you think about the brown field, we had DEC, Hydro, and Musso, so three technically. And if you want to count Dr. Hughes and Simenow, it's like five. So I'm just concerned that we don't have any backup. I don't think any of us are equipped to look at that data, the parts per million stuff, and give it a rational thought. So I just, I know the budget's done. I'm just saying that that's something we should think about, because once that data comes out, depending on what they say, it still would be good to have someone to help, to help guide us.
Well, we sort of do have a budget for that. It's not in the village budget, it's in the state budget.
Okay.
And it's the budget of the DEC and the Department of Health. They're the entity that's actually monitoring, and they're doing the analysis. So once they go ahead and give us, supply us with that intel, that intelligence, then we have to, I think what you're maybe asking is, should we then go ahead and take additional taxpayer money to kind of double-check what our taxpayer money already told us, which is that whatever the data is, I have no idea what that data's gonna be. So, and I think that's gonna be a board decision. But the budget for that, to speculate that we're not gonna believe the DEC, and I'm not saying that you're even implying that, right?
No.
So I think, you know, when that point in time comes, that's a decision the board's gonna have to make.
That's fair. I just wanted to know, just a question why that was-
Yeah, I think we've already paid for it in our state tax bill, so, you know, to have to impose an additional burden, you know, the double taxation for that particular line item, it's something that we would have to cross that bridge if we got to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on anything that's on this agenda? Okay, if not, we're gonna go to resolutions. And I have resolution number one, which is authorizing the annual Gifford Street Block Party on June 9. The rain date is gonna be on June 10 or the 16. And that block party is gonna be from noon to midnight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number two is authorizing the annual Oak Avenue Block Party on August 25 from noon to midnight. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number three is authorizing the extension of an agreement with CPI HR Corporate Plans, Inc. for services regarding the administration of the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. Resolution number four is authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with the village of Rybrook for equipment share on an as-needed or emergency basis. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We want to thank them very much for what we're doing here, is we're actually putting in place a mechanism where if we needed a specialized piece of equipment that Rybrook may have, that we certainly didn't want to make an investment in because we may hardly ever use it, they're gonna go ahead and let us, you know, we can borrow that piece of equipment from them. So we want to thank them very much. And thank Mr. Burke, because he's from Rybrook, so I'm sure he had a lot to do with this.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And resolution number five is authorizing the receipt and collection from several owners of property as shown on the section block lot and the assessment roll filed in the office of the village clerk. The several sums named in the columns headed village tax opposite their respective lot numbers for the following purposes. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
This is actually our tax warrant, so that's what we're approving. We approved the budget last month, so this is our warrant now.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And finally, resolution number six is authorizing the payment of vouchers in the amount of $542,291.20. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Trustee Giordano.
In favor.
Trustee Luizy.
In favor.
Trustee Andino.
In favor.
Trustee Lang.
In favor.
Mayor Eklund.
In favor. And that's gonna bring us to our departmental reports to the board, and seeing if maybe, I see our chief is not here tonight, but maybe Lieutenant Zerolnick. Do you have anything you wanted to say tonight? Lieutenant Andy is all the dare kids.
Yeah. I just wanted to let the residents know that this Saturday, we have our police memorial at 9:00 in front of Village Hall. We welcome everyone. Monday evening, I believe at 7:00 PM, we have our police awards to honor the officers, and there are accommodations for the past year's events. And Saturday, the 19th, starting at 11:00 AM till 3:00 PM, we have our Community Safety Day, which will be held at Eastchester Town Hall. The Tuckahoe Police Department, along with the Eastchester Police Department, will host that event. We have outside agencies, the county police, Eastchester Fire will do the demonstration. We're giving out some, we're raffling bicycles. There's a bicycle competition course, so we welcome all of our residents to those events. That's it.
That's cool. Good. A lot of good stuff.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Frank, is there anything else you wanted to add tonight? Okay, thank you. Camille, anything? Gary, anything on the legal front? Okay, David? All right, it's a quiet month. Miscellaneous business, let's see. Well, we talked about the award ceremony. The police award ceremony is gonna be on Monday, May 14. We have a residents' community meeting, which is going to be one week from this Wednesday, that's May 16. And that's gonna be at, you wanna come to Village Hall, and this meeting is something we do. We actually have it on our trolley. So it's a pretty cool event. Please come to Village Hall at 6:45. You board the trolley. And the purpose of this meeting is to, once you're on that trolley, if there's something that you want the village board to take a look at, maybe it's a pothole in front of your house, or a tree limb that's hanging over your driveway, the trolley's gonna drive right to your house and take a look at it. And we'll make a note of it. So it's a pretty cool opportunity to have the meeting instead of just in a static location. It's kind of flowing throughout the entire village. So it's pretty neat if you've never done it before. And then our next village board meeting is gonna be on June 11. And that's always at 8:00. So we're gonna now move to our Board of Trustees member reports. So we're going to now move to our Board of Trustees member reports and we're going to start with our deputy mayor, Tom Giordano.
Thanks, Mayor Steve. Uh, just to piggyback on, on Mayor Eklund's and Lieutenant Zerolnick's notifications, this Saturday is the, the Tuckahoe Patrolman's Benevolent Association's Remembrance Ceremony. Um, it takes place on the Village Hall at nine A M. and it is a, um, a moving ceremony that remembers those who have served in our community, those who have gone before us and those who have sacrificed in, in the line of service. So I would encourage all those to attend and to bring their, their families to attend. It's a nice spring morning and it's, it's worthy of attendance. With respect to the zoning board, uh, there's a meeting on, uh, May ninth at seven thirty P M. with a work session beforehand at six thirty P M. The items are one hundred and fifty Main Street, which is for a new fitness center, which will be in Orange Theory. Um, on a hu, uh, there's a hundred in Main Street, which is to allow residential on the ground level and two eighty-three Marble Dale, which is to convert a basement to a finished basement. On five fifteen, May fifteenth at seven thirty, there is, uh, our plant, next planning board meeting and the items on the agenda are one eighty-seven White Plains Road, which is a site plan for the new athletic field, which is Concordia College, and then one fifty Main Street, which is the Orange Theory Fitness Center. Uh, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, trustee Luisi.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to start with the Tuckahoe History Committee. They conducted two outreach programs during the month of April entitled The History of Tuckahoe Marble and those programs took place at the Tuckahoe Library and at the Rotary Club. On April twenty-second, uh, which was Earth Day, the Tuckahoe Community Center hosted that event and the history committee had a table there that was providing information about the Bronx River Parkway. And also, as Vito Pinto mentioned earlier, the history committee has been very prominent in providing the Eastchester veterans with information about the upcoming program that's going to be held on Memorial Day. Moving along to our Tuckahoe Seniors, uh, tomorrow, the mayor and trustees Danny Lang and Omira Andino will be visiting the Tuckahoe Seniors. And then a big event, a trip that they've been planning for, for quite a while, on May twenty-second, they're going to be taking a trip out to Peddler's Village in New Hope, Pennsylvania. And then they're going to close out the month of May by attending a Cottle School Spring Concert and Luncheon. And as always, the Tuckahoe Seniors meet every Tuesday and Thursday at Father Fatah Hall from ten A M. until two P M. And our Tuckahoe History Committee meets here at Village Hall's second floor every Wednesday from nine A M. until one P M. And that's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. And trustee Andino.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so I'll start with the library. The Friends of the Tuckahoe Library are presenting the new Westchester Symphony Orchestra, their main fundraiser for the year. So they'd like for everyone to come out. It's on June ninth at two P M. at the Tuckahoe Community Center. If you'd like to register, you should call nine one four, nine six one, two one two one. Uh, so we should try to get out and support the library who does so much for this community. Uh, some of the events that are happening in May, uh, we have tech time for kids on Tuesday, May fifteenth for building games with Scratch for kids ages seven to ten. They have, uh, Thursday, May seventeenth, Meet Fendi Pause and Tale Storytime for ages birth through five, for parents who want to get out with the kids. Tuesday, May twenty-second at three thirty, they're showing Ferdinand Kids Movie for ages four to ten. And there are some teen programs. They have monthly teen chess. They're also doing tech, tech time for teens, Intro to Three D Design with Tink, Tinkercad for ages eleven and, and older. They also have teen movies, um, Wednesday, May thirtieth and into June, which I'll talk a little bit more about next month. The adult programs, they also have free yoga for beginners. For those of you who know how expensive yoga is, might want to check that out if you like yoga. Thursday, May tenth, five forty-five to seven P M. And they also have the book club meetings on Saturday, May twelfth at eleven and Wednesday, May sixteenth at six thirty. So those are some of the programs for the library. Last month, I, I mentioned that we were looking into starting a quarterly newsletter. Sarah Derisse, who volunteered and agreed to help us with that, has submitted a proposal, four-part proposal, to just enhance our communication with the residents and we'd like to start with the newsletter, um, probably starting either in June or July, so look out for that. We'll have, uh, paper copies for senior centers and possibly various local businesses and we'll have digital copies out also. So look out for the, for the newsletter. I also want to, um, let's see here, to let everyone know that I attended the last, um, friend, the Friends of Tuckahoe Library Board Meeting and at that time, Anthony, Antonio Leo presented a plan for modifications to the library to add two rooms, you, to make better use of the space. Um, a really nice plan to give us a more efficient use of the space and, um, I think next month or the following month, the library will come forward and talk to you guys more about that plan. They're also asking for volunteers. Volunteer your talent at the library. If you are an artist or like gardening or crocheting, knitting, you can, uh, put that skill set to use at the library and help some other people learn your skill. I also want to, um, follow up with, uh, some concerns that were voiced by the village, some village residents at the last meeting regarding noise complaints made, uh, from some residents about the VFW post. I'm glad to see that the commander of the post, Reverend Stowe is here and also I met with him and the property manager for the quarry, as well as the chief, Castanza and Lieutenant Zerolnick. Um, we just beginning meeting, beginning talks about how to resolve this so that we, we can get, get along and have a greater sense of community and work together. And I think that, I'm pretty confident that we'll be able to resolve this and work through it. So I'm glad that they're here. And I just want to say to Erin Provenzano, a thank you. I mean, we talked about the importance of, um, the environment and, you know, we had people come forward and talk about that. So Erin put together the Earth Day and she did a really nice job the, the entire weekend and I took part in that and I told her I need to do more, so I pledged to do that. Um, let's see. Um, also a thank you to, uh, former trustee Claire Gorman, who took some time out on Sunday to meet with me and give me a tour of the Crestwood area. She showed me some of the beautiful work that the Tree Committee is doing, so I just want to acknowledge them. Uh, members Elaine Gary, Donald and Ginger Crosby, Frank DeMarco, Sandy Reyes Guerra and Tom Ringwald. Thank you guys and keep it up. And that's it for me.
Wonderful. Thank you. Uh, trustee Lang?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Um, yeah, I just want to reiterate, um, Omira and Erin's, um, efforts. We'd really like to congratulate Erin on the turnout for Earth Day. That was terrific. We, uh, we really enjoyed it. It was a lot of fun. And, uh, also, um, recognize Mike's efforts. He was a beast out there. Um, so, uh, secondly, we, uh, we want to talk about, um, an event that's going to be at the Tuckahoe High School on Friday, June first, from seven to nine. It's called Fly to the Max. It's going to be a slam dunk exhibition and, uh, it's going to benefit the E cap and it's also going to benefit, uh, this young fellow, Max Pierce is putting together a student athlete scholarship and, uh, we're really proud of him and admire, uh, all his efforts. That's super stuff. Keep up the good work, Max.
For those who don't know. For those who don't know, Max Pierce is a graduate of Tuckahoe High School and Purchase.
Yeah. Yep. Good stuff that kid's doing. He's going to be one to watch.
Lovely Phillips Grant's.
That's right. Lovely's Grant's. She's super proud of him, that's for sure. Um, okay, we also have, um, the Varsity Club of, uh, Tuckahoe High School will host their annual, uh, Varsity Athletic Awards Ceremony at Melino's Lake Isle on Tuesday, June fifth. That's a, it's a nice event to, you know, show those young fellows how much we appreciate them. Um, also we have, um, oh, my favorite event, it's, uh, Tuckahoe Summertime Fireworks. Sorry that Johnny's not here to talk about it, but, uh, that's Saturday, July fourteenth. People come from far and wide for that event. That's definitely, uh, one not to miss. And, um, lastly, I just want to, uh, you know, remind everybody about the Veterans Ceremony. That to me is, uh, probably, uh, the most important, uh, thing I have to talk about. Yeah, we want to make every effort to be there. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Be there for sure. We'll, uh, we'll have good numbers here, that's for sure.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to, um, actually, I have only one thing to talk about. Um, I was going to talk a little bit about Memorial Day, but Vito did an excellent job. Actually, Vito, I had one question. Um, the Tuckahoe High School, are they having the ceremony? They normally have that on Monday, like before Memorial Day?
Right. Please. And, uh, they have a very nice program, uh, being done. This is about the fifth year or so and they have it for K through twelve.
Mm-hmm.
All the students from Cottle School walk up to the football field and they invite veterans and they do a very nice job. The kids participate in many ways.
What's the date of that?
It's on May sixteenth, starting at nine thirty.
Got it.
And also, uh, one that the community should really get involved in as well is, ever since I came back from, uh, the Navy in nineteen seventy, I've attended the one at Bronxville High School. Uh, they every year on the Friday of Memorial Day, gather all the students K through twelve on the great lawn and they've recently redone the plaques and, and, uh, that's always a wonderful experience as well. And then that will be followed by our townwide ceremony, as we said, but.
Right.
Want to make sure that people know it's not Memorial Day, it's on Sunday, May twenty-seventh at seven P M. at Eastchester High School.
It's going to be a busy weekend, I'll tell you.
It will be busy.
Yes.
And just let us know about the ceremony, whether we can do it on, uh, Monday following the Bronxville Parade at noon at the, where, where World War One Monument at the foot of Winter Hill. We have some nice plans to do and it won't be long.
Okay.
Surely everybody will be tired after that.
Vito, before you go, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but this is a question that I know that the mayor and I have been asked, I'm sure everybody on this board's been asked. Uh, and I would, and I think it would be most beneficial for the community here from a veteran. And that question is, is why don't we have a parade anymore?
Well, I'll tell you why. Number one, we have held a parade for many, many years and each and every year, the attendance dwindles. And I've had people come and say, we want a parade. When I say, how did you like the Marine Corps Paris Island Band? What Marine Corps Paris Island Band? They led us in the parade for five years straight and one time we moved the parade to Sunday the week before and our attendance was dismal. They had set a parade, uh, following the parade at Eastchester, a concert at Eastchester Lake Isle in the parking lot. We provided tons of hot dogs and hamburgers. They did a great job at the monument. We marched up to Lake Isle and everybody went home. Uh, so it's, it's very disheartening to hear that people want a parade. And I have to say truthfully that I think parades are for the living and you get a very good turnout at Saint Patrick State Parade because it's, it's meaningful to the culture and the community. You also get a great parade's attendance at Columbus Day, which I chaired for many, many years, plus the rides afterward brings the community together. But I'm very serious when I say it's not just I, it's we. And there have been some veterans who have questioned this as well, but, uh, whenever we had the parades, there would be groups that joined us each place. And it always was at Tuckahoe, everybody would come down from Eastchester, follow the parade and meet us and greet us as we came through the tunnel part of Tuckahoe into the square. And then when the Marine Corps Band played at five o'clock that evening and heat and, and sweating, driving sun, everybody left. And I, I couldn't believe, even the school kids, and we'd say to them, you know, this is music, this is a parade, this is a band that sits there and is patriotic, played everything you want. So when we had that rain out three years ago and we moved indoors, and I believe Steve will attest to it and many of the veterans and those of you who were there, everybody said, wow, this beats the noise factor. This beats the turnout, the traffic control. This was comfortable and more importantly, said it was meaningful. Following years, last year's ceremony where we honored some gentlemen from each community, they said the same thing. Now this year, we have the auditorium, it's air conditioned, it's at night and all I can say is.
Newly renovated too. It's beautiful.
Newly renovated. Hopefully everything will go well. But all I can say is those people who want to be there will be there and those who want to be at a parade and running and split, they'll do that and they won't show up that mu, Sunday night. And, uh, if I've offended anybody because I said, we're looking at a ceremony that's meaningful. And I think if you come to this year's ceremony, just for Corporal Ernest Hill, his sisters will be wonderfully appreciative because they wrote the, the, the plan for him. But I, I think that when it comes to that, you know, there's a parade on Memorial Day and other places and we'll go to Bronxville. And, uh, everybody who wants a parade can join Bronxville's parade. It's a wonderful community parade, very short. We don't have to offend, you know, where do we start? Where do we finish? How do we control the traffic? Do we turn here? Do we stop at different monuments? I, I think that we'll do that privately ourselves and who wants to join us will join us. And if anybody has any questions, we have a meeting tomorrow night at the American Legion Post with the committee and we find that just asking for a couple of meetings with officials and scouts and everything, we always get the question, what time's the parade? I can't deny that. But we do get that often after numerous emails, after numerous TV programs and, and coming and speaking and going to places, there still goes a, a question asked, where's the parade? And I can only say that, you know, if you come Sunday night on May twenty-seventh and you find it a tribute to the Centennial of World War One and the eleven members of our community who gave their life, not all of them in combat, you will learn that more than half of the people who died in World War One from America and around the countries and the nations were killed by the Spanish Flu influenza. There was no cure for it. It spread like wildfire. And I believe A.C. Jeffress was one of them who succumbed to the, uh, Spanish Flu. And, uh, you know, so, um, maybe I was a little too fast to say it, but I feel very strongly if we can do the ceremony properly, and they do hold a lot of ceremonies throughout the, uh, the Memorial Day weekend and other days. Like if you, uh, went to the Gate of Heaven Cemetery, cemetery in Valhall at Thornwood, uh, actually where they hold the, uh, the Medal of Honor Tribute, you will find that very meaningful. And the cemeteries have taken it upon themselves to erect statues or, uh, monuments dedicated to those members who are buried in their cemeteries who have received the highest award for gallantry and courage and bravery above the call of duty. And we have two of them there, as I said before. Sergeant Richard O'Neill, World War One, and Staff Sergeant Robert Charles Murray, Vietnam, who many people don't know, was a very brilliant young man, and he was in charge of a platoon of eleven people beside himself. And when they said grenade, and somebody tripped a wire, he unselfishly jumped on it and buffered the blast, giving his own life. And I'm happy to say that all eleven survived. Vietnam came home to procreate, and they continuously recognize his tremendous deed and his feat and the sacrifice of his own life. They've gotten home to raise families. And I think Memorial Day is the day that we recognize those from throughout our country, and most importantly, our community and our county. And that's why we recognize the program that we started and I was very involved in at the county, to recognize the Westchester's Fallen Walkway. We have seventeen plaques and trees for seventeen men who are parents, or a father, who are policemen, firemen, who got the call of duty as reservists and guards. And the last one is Tech Sergeant Joseph Lem, who led the charge to prevent the motorcycle with full of bombs and gave his own life to save all of his buddies behind him. So that's what Memorial Day is about. The only thing I feel sadly about is that, you know, the Congress has decreed that the flag shall be returned to full staff at noon. And we never could, we never could really meet that. And while I'm here, I'll just say, as a veteran, I've known to be a pain in the neck about flags and proper protocol. But I think it's important because it's tradition. And there are people who will call me, and on Dante Avenue, I live just up the hill, one member was a veteran, Vietnam veteran, his flag was torn. I very rarely go up Dante, so I didn't see it. But when I did see it, I called Billy. I said, "Billy, do you need help?" And he said, "Yeah, I'm too old. I have Parkinson's. Nobody can change the flag." So we changed it for him. And I've always been grateful to the town and the village. Whenever they needed flags, our posters donated them. Even to the point where at the A.C. Jeffries one year, I borrowed a ladder, a cap, carried it down to the A.C. Jeffries, and climbed up to fix the flag and replace it. And I've done that numerous times, and I've had people chastise me. "Why are you doing that? Why do we care?" Because I care. And that's been my motto for twenty-seven years of public service, my motto for thirty-two years in community service of teaching at Tuckahoe and several other places, and my service to the country. I think anybody will tell you, if you go down Tuckahoe Road, right across from Staples, you'll see the flag torn apart in a tree. And the thing that you have to do is just tell them, "You all know the flagpole at Tuckahoe Post Office. It was very short. It could very rarely be hoisted up that it didn't touch the roof. Took us two years." And I like to say I spearheaded it. And anybody challenged me, they kept saying, "You'll never win." And they finally, after two years, put a thirty-five-foot flagpole up. Now the American flag, even at half-staff, doesn't touch the roof, which it's not supposed to do. And I've had neighbors say, "Yeah, you know, I didn't realize that." So we have brochures. We'll be happy to, one day, order several hundred, make them available to those residents who hoist flags and display flags properly, that when they get soiled and torn, take it down. Don't give it up.
And retire it properly in one of the flag boxes we have here.
Oh, yes, and we have a scout that just got recognized, A.J. Rodriguez, for building the fire pit at the Leroy Gregory Post up in the north end.
Was that his Eagle Court of Honor on Saturday?
I was there with you last Saturday, and same with Jack Murtha, who did the films on our three-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary. It's history. History shouldn't be rewritten. It's there. It happened. It's real. And Eastchester got a lot of recognition out of that program, that scout program. So the scouts do help. I know he's been talking about getting things done. And I have to say that, you know, perhaps people don't know it, but along the Bronx River, we do have floats that catch the debris coming down. And the Parks Department, for years, has been reeling them in, taking, I can tell you, a lot more garbage and debris. Because it's not just residents, it's people walking by that will drop their bags and bottles. It's kids that don't understand the purpose and the extent of a nickel. I can tell you, we've had nickels raised for the Honor Flight. And we've had several people, and I just donated money, just raised over a hundred dollars. I take the bottles back to the stores. I don't go collecting them at the streets in the garbage. I asked the neighborhood, one time in our own neighborhood, Toys for Tots, hundred and seven dollars' worth a bottle. That's not chicken feed. I get the kids. I did it at Cottle School, when we had that nice little flower pot in the back. Kids, on Monday, everybody bring in five. One parent got mad at me because he said we couldn't bring in beer bottles. They're a nickel, too. So we said, "Oh, no, you could do it." And I think it was something like over six hundred dollars that we gave to St. Jude's Research Hospital, because we had two young men who suffered from cancer, and they had lost their hair, and we wore the ball caps, and we supported them. And it's, it's something that people call me crazy for, but I still do it.
Well, the ceremony is important, and you know what?
Ceremony is, I hope that answered your question.
Thank you.
I know I'm not long-winded, but I hope the people here would bear with me on that. Attend the ceremony, and tell me how you like it.
You're right.
And if we make mistakes, so be it. You'll be cool and air-conditioned. We'll have the best of electronics, and we hope that we have a good turnout. So I'm here also in case, and my good commander, Ed Stowe, is on the committee. And like I said, maybe we'll talk about what we can do, and I know I've had some conversations with some people about the sound, and the post could use some help getting some money to soundproof the building in some ways, and take care of some of the matters that could resolve the issue. So, Omira, whatever you do, count on some of us to be with you. Okay?
Thank you again. Thanks for coming up. Oh, so actually, what I'm gonna talk about, the only thing I have, is that this Friday, I'm actually very, very excited, because this is something that I've done for the last couple of years. It's Mayor for a Day, and this is a fundraiser, part of the, Cottle School has an annual fundraiser, and what we do is, we actually provide an opportunity for a student to go ahead, and I think it's a Chinese auction, and they can win to be Mayor for a Day. And I am thrilled that this year's Mayor for a Day is a woman. So we are actually gonna finally have our first female mayor in the village of Tuckahoe. Her name is Erin Gurken, and she is a student at the William E. Cottle School. She gets to get a day out of school, and it's gonna be this Friday. She will come here at nine o'clock in the morning. I will officially swear her in. She'll receive a proclamation stating that she is Mayor for a Day. And then what I do is, I spend the day, and I bring her around to all the departments. We will have a staff meeting. Everyone here will address her as Mayor, because she is the Mayor for a Day, and they will have conversations with her, and I'll coach her a little bit throughout the day. We'll tour each department in the village. I will take her to lunch, and then she's discharged in the early afternoon. So I know that the other students who've done this, who've won this and done it, I see them often, actually, and they say, "You know what? It was one of the greatest things they ever did." So I'm real excited about it, and I'm especially excited that we finally have a woman mayor for a Day. So that's gonna be this Friday. And that's gonna bring us to the second opportunity to address the board on anything you want to talk about. I train with Juan. How are you, Juan? I haven't seen you in a while. Good.
You're the infamous Juan.
I am the infamous Juan. How are you guys?
Hello, how are you? Nice shirt you have on.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm a little underdressed. I'm coming straight from my train with Juan. I'm coming here representing the Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce. Right now, I'm the president-elect, but as of June first, our first meeting, I will be president of the Chamber of Commerce. With that said, we are trying to continue a lot of the things that we did in the past with the Chamber of Commerce, but we're trying to not only do the same things, but enhance that as well. But we also wanted to create a new event that we're hoping that we can request, Depot Square, July twenty-first, from ten to four o'clock, yeah, four o'clock. What we want to do is, we want to have a small, a small business fair, where we invite all the different vendors and different community businesses in the community to bring their products or bring different things for the community, so that they can share what they offer to the community. We'll probably have, like, you know, clowns, different other things to DJ, things to, you know, attract people to come to Depot Square, but the main thing is to give as much exposure to our, our community businesses as possible. You know, the main thing, when I started in the chamber, I was, I first just started because I wanted to help, but what I've noticed is, being in there, a lot of people, we have a hundred and ten members now, and from us, I mean, I, I feel that's a small number, especially being a part of other Chamber of Commerce's, but at the same time, I've been a part of this one for about eight years. So it's like I, I've learned from Judy Fix, I've now learned from Paula Corso, I've learned from, you know, some good, some good people. But with that said, it's like it's time for us to, you know, have more people and have more people involved in our chamber, and use this, use the community to help the community, but use the, our businesses as a way to help and give exposure for them as well. Because we, our membership is kind of dying a little bit. In Scarsdale, they just lost their chamber. I definitely don't want that to happen to us, and I'm gonna do my darndest to make sure that it doesn't happen.
Well, you said a couple of things. The very first thing you said, and I keyed in on it, you said the Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce.
He's just...
No, I like that. And I say, you know, every year when I go, I always say, it's the, your office is here in Village Hall. It's the Tuckahoe. But thank you for that. I keyed in on that. July twenty-one, it's a Saturday.
Eastchester as well, I do want to...
That's right. No, I get it, but you're here tonight in Tuckahoe.
My business is in Tuckahoe.
And I know you're on Main Street in Tuckahoe. I train with Juan, right up on Main Street. So July twenty-one, it's a Saturday, ten to four. Now, when you say Depot Square, explain to me what your thought process is, like, the close off the other part, like towards the railroad station? What are you thinking about?
Probably, we're thinking more towards the railroad station, I mean, more towards the railroad station, only because we don't want to, like, just, like, take away from the traffic that's coming.
From the businesses, too. Right.
You know, this is our first event. I mean, I'm not saying we're small, but at the same time, is we want to make sure that we can utilize the space that we have. If we do get more vendors and we can use more space, I would, I would obviously ask if we could use, you know, utilize more space, but right now, based on this being the first event, and us trying to make it as big as possible, I also want to be reasonable as possible.
Okay. So if you could just please send an actual written request, Miriam could send it, that's no problem, and identify what the chief will do, is he will, basically, he advises us on what we should and shouldn't do, but to close off the, what we call the Starbucks side of the square is normally not really a problem. We just have to make sure there's a bus that goes through there, so we make sure that we alert Westchester County that they can't have a bus drive through the area if it's sectioned off. I'm not even sure if the bus runs at that time. I'm not sure, but the chief will, will look into that, but it's, for six hours, I think it's a great idea. So rain or shine, I guess you're thinking?
Rain or shine.
Okay.
Rain or shine.
All right.
I don't think I have to ask anything, because I don't have a date, but I know we're also trying to do a taste of Eastchester, a taste of Tuckahoe as well.
Taste of Tuckahoe, come on.
Taste of Tuckahoe as well, so.
All right, good.
So, my sweet, you guys...
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, Colleen Staunton for Winslow Circle. I'm here to ask the Board of Trustees to consider prohibiting stadium lighting in the village of Tuckahoe. I represent a number of residents on Winslow Circle, and we all know Concordia has taken them off. They've been very generous in listening to the residents, but we feel that it's not appropriate anywhere within the village, and would hope that the, the board would consider any specifically prohibiting this lighting in the zoning regulations. I know that there's a number of places that would have to take place, but right now, it doesn't expressly prohibit, but it doesn't say it allows either. So our request to the board is to consider this in conversation and in future meetings to put it on the agenda as well.
Thank you. And actually, it's something we talked about internally, I guess a couple of months ago when the issue came up, and we spoke to our village attorney, and one of the things that we did realize is that the imposing a ban, it would actually be part of our village code. So there's a process for that, as you know. And it would really apply, or would have to apply, to privately-owned property. It would not apply to village-owned real estate. So then we said, "Okay, what privately-owned fields are there?" And we know that that's a field that's in the Concordia field, and we couldn't really think of any other properties that were in the village of Tuckahoe. So, but I'm gonna let our attorney speak about it.
No, I agree with Mr. Mayor. We did rack our brains to try to think if there's another privately-owned field, and I don't believe there is in Tuckahoe. So any more, now, it wouldn't be a moratorium, any code change would really just affect Concordia. And again, Concordia's taken off the lights, as you know. I'm sure there's gonna be, Planning Board has not voted on it yet, but they're probably put something in the resolution saying that they're not allowed to have the lighting.
Right. So that is, that is a good point. If it's in the resolution, that would be good. I mean, our, one of our points would be, if it, if we have to apply that to Concordia, that would be fine for us. But I guess my other question is, why can it not be for village-owned?
The village is exempt from anything, believe it or not. The village can do whatever they want on their property. They can, they're completely exempt. And if we were to impose a restriction on it, a future board could, you know, basically change that. So I'll let the attorney explain.
No, that's exactly correct. And even if the, the village board said, "Okay, on privately-owned property, there can't be any stadium lighting," there's always relief to the zoning board that they would have, or future boards can change that. So it's really just, as we go along, unfortunately.
I agree. And things change, but I, I think we would still push for at least any privately-owned property within Tuckahoe then, and if that went into Concordia.
And you, you know what? So I gave it some thought, and I said, "Okay, well, maybe somebody would, maybe, maybe if somebody owned a huge chunk of land that was developed, and if they passed on and they said, 'You know what? I want that to become a football stadium or a football field,' then that would be a private piece of property that was then created. So in, in that instance, what you're asking for would apply." So it's something we're gonna kick it around the next time we do a zoning. We've accumulated some things that we want to change in our zoning code. We're gonna take another harder look at it this year. Last year, we were trying to get some things done. It's quite expensive when you're making a change to your zoning code, just the whole process of public notice, and then once you've made the change, the actual service company that has to make the physical change of all our documents for it. So we try to lump a lot of things together, and this is one that we're gonna talk about.
Okay. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
My name's Ed Conway. My wife and I own a Winslow Circle. So just to, to support Colleen, you know, our concern is, we understand, we don't understand much of the process, but we know that the zoning regulations do have to change. Lights, you know, are not allowed in the village. So that's what we're sort of after at the end of the day, and whether that's an immediate moratorium, which we understand other communities have done, with the goal of explicitly stating there's no stadium lighting in the zoning regulations. So in the terms of the timing, what would the timing be then with, you know, your thought process?
Well, the first thing is, we could, even if we wanted to impose a moratorium right now, it would not apply to the Concordia field, because they have an open application. So you can't do that. That's, they would challenge that. I mean, we could attempt to do that, but they would have legal grounds for, you can't change the rules of the game once they're already playing the game, in essence. So for the Concordia property, the best-case scenario is that they've, they've taken the lighting out of their application. It seems to have appeased the, I watched the Planning Board and Zoning Board meetings from my computer whenever it worked, and it seems that that's appeased those boards. It looks like they're gonna get approval at, at some future date. So I believe that, that the lighting is totally off the table, and they're not gonna reintroduce it. You know, not to say that in another five years, you know, there's a whole new administration in Concordia, and they're like, "Hey, you know what? We want to put lights up here." So I get that things change. I understand that. But imposing a moratorium would only apply to that one field, and it's not applicable because they have an application right now.
But I guess if they took the lights off the application, wouldn't that make that then enforce? So the, the lights are not in the application?
Right, that's...
So...
No, but they have a build, they have an open application period. It didn't have to be specifically about the lights, so...
No, exactly, yes.
Right.
The lights are not part of the site plan application right now, so that's off the table, and...
So like, a moratorium could not be put immediately in place? That's sort of, just researching it very...
Yeah, moratorium's more of a, it's kind of like a timeout in sports. And there's no reason to call a timeout right now. There's nothing pending here. If another application comes before the Planning Board, this board says, you know, "Hey, let's look at this." They can impose a moratorium at that point, because a moratorium's, it's, it's short in nature.
Yes.
But again, there's nothing urgent right now. There's no stringent circumstances that would require a moratorium. The board can just go through the regular process and look to change the zoning code without really any other applications that could come before the board, because there's no other properties.
So just like in terms of then-timing, is it possible to change the zoning regulations within this year, or?
I think it's, it's probably reasonable. I mean, we're early enough in the year. I can't say for sure that it's done before the end of this year, but it's, it's going to be in, the conversation about this will be in the mix. I mean, there's a lot more to it. I mean, for, I would be in favor of banning sixty- or seventy-foot light towers anywhere. I mean, just me personally. So if that's brought before me, I'm a, you know, get rid of that.
Yes.
Am I a get rid of any lighting? I can't necessarily say that I would, that I would be in favor of eliminating any lighting, because there could be some, you know, ground, there could be other lighting features that don't impact neighbors. You know, in this case, you're talking about your neighborhood. So, but, so it's easy to kind of say, "You know what? Let's just get rid of anything that's over forty feet tall, or fifty or sixty, seventy." I think there were sixty-foot-tall towers.
At one point, there were eighty-foot...
Yeah, crazy.
Yeah. So I mean, that's, you know, our concern is that, you know, again, it has to be reasonable, but it's also residentially zoned in that area. So even something that's twenty-foot in a residential zoned area, we don't think in there, you know, is appropriate. And, you know, I think with the online petition, there were over two-hundred-and-thirty people had signed that in the community, showing, you know, how much the community is against this and how detrimental it is to the community. So we look, you know, for this, maybe on the next agenda of the trustees, to discuss this and start discussing this publicly, because there is a lot of support here. And we think it is very detrimental to the community, our lifestyles, you know, our dimly-leet streets, you know, and this is really what we're sort of after, and ask you to consider this.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Stowe. Thank you for coming down tonight.
It was Stowe, Commander of the VFW Post 2768. I want to thank Trustee Andino for informing me about the situation. I'm a realist, as most people know, and we have to understand this, that whenever there is multi-mixed housing, you're going to have cultural diversity. Now, I say this because I looked at the reports that the chief provided for me. In the year since May sixth of 2017, there were like twenty complaints.
These would be noise, just because people don't, noise complaints?
Noise complaints.
Got it.
Very same.
Because people at home don't know...
But I'm saying this. And seven, seven of those were against the post. Four appear to be justified, which was ameliorated real quickly. Three were unfounded. So what this says to me is that whenever we have this cultural diversity, then we have to sit down and talk, because we're all of one community. And a lot of people don't understand that, so I appreciate what Trustee Andino's doing. And certainly, we are willing in the post to correct anything that we feel that needs to be corrected. But at the same time, anything that is not, you know, found against us, well, we will stand for justice. So the idea is that we want to sit down and talk and have this communication, so that we can resolve this for the benefit of the community. Because as far as I'm concerned, with the post, we have a strong legacy there. We've done some great things in this community, and we are bound and determined to preserve that. So the idea is that we will do whatever we have to do to make this thing work. So that's all I have to say.
I'm happy, and thank you for coming. I know we had a long conversation about this at our work session on Thursday night. Trustee Andino talked about the meeting that she had. I know Trustee Lang is very, very interested in trying to help in terms of sort of sound, you know, helping out the facility to kind of muffle some of the sound there, not just for the neighbors, apparently, I guess for the residents who live upstairs, too. So, you know, to help you guys out, just to make it a little bit easier, you know, a little bit quieter, you know, inside the building.
Well, what I want to emphasize, though, is that, like I said, there were twenty complaints.
Right, no, I get that. Yep, yeah.
And so that means thirteen others were related to...
Something else.
To something else in the area. So it's significant to point out that whenever you have that mixed housing, you're going to have cultural diversity. And, you know, people have to understand that we have to support one another, we have to get along with each other. Nobody's better than anybody else, and that's critical. So that's why we want to talk, okay?
Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mike Dordano, Chestnut Street, Tocco. Vito, I want to say to you that if we didn't have veterans, we might have to sprechen Sie Deutsch. So I think that that's important. Maybe say "yet" too. So I appreciate all the veterans have done. Both my grandfathers served in World War I, so. Frank, thank you for the cleanup day on the river, it was awesome. Silvio was fantastic, bad back and all. I think it was three hundred pounds of crap that we cut out of the river, which was great. Danny had his whole family there. Omira was there. We had like, you know, Danny and Damon Mayer were doing bipartisan cleaning. It was awesome. I have actually pictures of it, so. Anyways, two, three things. One thing is, is that ECAP, so we're moving forward with my plan on ECAP for the kids, tweens, from ten to twelve, thirteen, to visit businesses. What we thought we'd do first, and I've talked to the chief about this already, was visit with the police department first, or not the first, but one of the first, the village, and then with the DPW, where these kids would go and just a tour, just to see what's going on, be part of our tour. We're going to pick other businesses, too, but I thought starting with the village would be a good thing. So I just have to get from Anna the date they're looking at, and then work with you all to figure out when it would be. It wouldn't be the same day. It's a short window, so it might be two days of this, I'm not sure yet, but we're going to work it out. And then from there, we'll do, working with the chamber and other businesses, we'll do other businesses. During the summer, we hope to have high school students take these tours, too, of businesses. So I'll keep you posted on that. Second, second and third thing is, last month, I asked about who was on the environmental committee and who was on the ethics board. And I just was curious, do we know who's on all those things?
The environmental committee, which, it's an ad hoc committee. So I'm not so sure we have current, you know, up-to-date listings of who's on there. I know Claire and Ginger, I believe, are on that committee.
Frank, you're on it.
Frank's on it. I'm not even sure how often they meet. You know, the environmental committee and the tree committee, they, you know, they're important committees in our community. They don't have the same structure as a planning board or a village board. Right. We don't track their, you know, meeting status as much. Completely ad hoc, and they're all strictly volunteers. So I don't have an answer for you right now. I don't have, actually, David and I were talking last week about some of the committees, so, and even, we're going to try to do a better job to understand who's on that committee.
Okay. All right. Okay, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? So I'm actually just going to close the meeting. I want to talk a little bit about, you know, we've talked a lot about veterans, and so I'm going to talk a little bit about my family for a minute. I've never done this for her. You know, because I think an awful lot about service that are military, military service. And my grandfather, who lived here in the Village of Tocco, he served in the first, he was in the Army in the First World War. My father, who's passed away, he was in the Seabees, and he served in the Second World War and in the Korean War. My brother served in the Navy, and he served time during the Vietnam War. And, you know, I always think about when I was a kid growing up and I had to sign up for selective service, am I going to be called in?